Welcome back. This is the chapter six homework review. We'll begin with question one. Wow, that was not big enough. Phillips Gold Manufacturers Award medals in August Phelps awarded five thousand medals, a hundred more than expected during the month. The company purchased one thousand one hundred ounces of gold for eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The standard price for the gold is eight hundred dollars per ounce. The company actually used one thousand ounces of gold for production. We need to calculate Phelps direct materials price variance for the month. To do this, we need to know what we know first. Okay? So first, let's get our nice line here. So while I do this, uh, get your paper out. Uh, prepare and however you want to do it. You can use a pen, you can use a pencil, you could even use a laptop if you want. Let's go on the screen here. So what do we know from the question? That's what we need to know first. Okay? Now, what do we know? We know that the amount, the actual quantity times the spent. So AQ times SP is equal to one, one, zero, zero. That was bad. Is equal to eleven hundred dollars, I mean eleven hundred ounces. And that it'll be multiplied by eight hundred dollars. Divided by ounces. In this case, the units of ounces will be eliminated and will be left with eighty eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars here. But we know that the company purchased it, because this is the standard price. You know that the company purchased it for eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Therefore, we take the, the, the market price versus the actual price. And we subtract them. So eight, eight, zero K minus eight, seven, five K is equal to five thousand dollars. Okay? And since this subtraction leaves us with a positive number, this is favorable. Does that make sense? Good. The next one goes as follows. Sheldon Enterprises purchased sixty thousand gallons of direct materials during the year at price of two dollars and seventy-five cents per gallon. Shelvin's direct materials price variance was six thousand dollars unfavorable. We need to calculate the standard price per gallon of direct materials. Okay? Good. How do we do that? Well, you see? Let's get some math rolling here. What do we know? We know that AQ times AP is equal to sixty K gallon multiplied by two dollars and seventy-five cents per gallon. Okay? And when you put this in your little calculator, you should get a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We also know that the AQ times the SP is equal to sixty thousand gallons. Okay? Sixty thousand gallons multiplied by the SP. And we don't know what the SP is, but what we know is that the entire thing is six thousand dollars unfavorable. With that known, we can begin solving the question. This was, all of that was given in the problem. I just wanted to show you it in person. But now that we have that, let us continue. Once more, I recommend watching these videos at two times speed to speed up any of the writing and you'll believe me, you'll have time. Now that we have all these numbers known, let's do some math. So it's one, six, five, K minus open parentheses, sixty thousand gallons multiplied by the SP. And we close the parentheses. This, all of this equals to six thousand dollars. Okay? So what this means is, if we take all of this here, we'll get one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars is equal to sixty thousand gallons multiplied by the SP. You, you get this by putting these two together. If that makes sense. So to get the SP from here, we need to take a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars divided by sixty thousand which will give us our SP. And with this, we know that the SP is equal to two dollars and sixty-five cents per gallon. Whoa. And that will be your answer for this question. Simple. Straightforward. Yes, no? If no, please, uh, write in the comments where you got lost. I will happily answer that. In fact, I want to answer it. It, it doesn't just help you, it helps me because it gives me more practice. But that's, that's more of a joke than being serious for a second. The next one is as follows. It's a tech solvers problem. Cool. Control copy, control paste, so you can see the problem. Tech Solvers produces eight-foot USB cables during the past year. The company purchased five hundred thousand feet of plastic coated wire at a price of twenty-five cents per foot. The direct material standard for the cables allows for eight point five feet of wire at the standard price of twenty-three cents. During the year, the company used a total of five hundred and thirty-five thousand feet of wire to produce six-three thousand eight-foot cables. We need to calculate the direct materials quantity variance for the year. Alright, let's use a nice blue this time. To do so, first we need to write what we know. We know from the question that AQ multiplied by SP is equal to five hundred and thirty-five thousand feet multiplied by twenty-three cents per feet. Okay? And then we, when we take this, we should get a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars and fifty cents. Then, we know that SQ times SP is equal to sixty-three thousand cables. And I will denote cable with a C A multiplied by eight point five feet. And then we multiply this again by twenty-three over twenty-three cents over feet. You'll put this in your calculator and you will get one, two, three thousand, a hundred and sixty-five dollars. Now, you know, these two numbers. This is the this is the real one. I mean, no, that's the wrong. This is, this is the amount for you actually got it. So this is a quantity times sales price. Sales price times sales quantity. And we'll do the subtraction section. Before that, you might want to take a second to write that down as I may have been going a little bit too fast. So what we will do here is this. This will allow us to do one, two, hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five minus a hundred and twenty-three thousand fifty. And this will equal to a hundred and fifteen dollars. And because it is still positive, it's favorable. This is the direct material quantity variance. Direct material quantity variance. With that out of the way, let us continue with our problems. Question four includes this. Huh? Uh, give me seven minutes. Okay. Control copy, control paste. Pellegrini Incorporated makes high-quality swimsuits during the year. The company produced eight hundred suits using one thousand twenty-five yards of material and the company purchased nine hundred yards of material for four thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-two. What? For four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. There we go. The direct material standard for the swimsuit allows one point two yards of material at the standard price of five dollars per yard. We need to calculate Pellegrini's direct material quantity variance for the year. That shouldn't be too hard. So what do we know about this? Let's see. We know that the AQ multiplied by the SP is equal to one thousand and twenty-five yards multiplied by five dollars per yard. In this case, the two yards will cancel each other out, leaving us only with a dollar amount of five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Okay? So the way you'll do that is you'll put into a calculator and in a calculator, you'll prob, you should just remember the units either by writing them down or if you're really good, you can keep track of them in your head. But if you really just want the numbers, you'll just plug in the numbers into a calculator and it'll make your life easier. So that's what we have for APSQ. Now we need the SQ, sales quantity times sales price. Which is, in this case, eight hundred suits, because that's what we needed originally. So let's just use, uh, units to denote suits. Multiplied by one point two yards multiplied by five dollars per yard. The yards will cancel out, leaving us with four thousand, eight hundred dollars for swimsuit. Well, for all the swimsuits, this is for everything. And we know that since this is the actual quantity, what we actually used, it'll be five thousand, a hundred and twenty-five. My bad. Since this is what we actually used, we need to check if it was actually good compared to what we should have used. So this is what we would normally use, which is four thousand, eight hundred subtracted by five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. This leaves us with negative three hundred and twenty-five dollars, which means that this is unfavorable. Okay, on to question five. I'm noticing a trend here. Chapter five was way harder than chapter six. Seriously. Levine Labs uses five, fifty thousand ounces of specimen adhesive during the year. The direct material standard allows one point five ounces of adhesive at a price of forty cents per ounce for each pathology test. The direct materials quantity variance was eight hundred and eighty dollars favorable. How many pathology tests did Levine Labs complete during the year? Well, let's see. How many? Okay, how many indeed? Because that is a question that we want to know. And to answer that question, we need to begin with the work. First, we need to know what we know. What does the problem give us? The problem lets us know that AQ multiplied by the SP is equal to fifty thousand ounces multiplied by forty cents per ounce. In this case, the ounces will cancel out because there's ones in the numerator and this one's in the denominator. Because when you have something like this, it's assumed that it's just over one. And you will be left with twenty thousand dollars upon finishing your calculation. Now, we need to have the sales quantity multiplied by the sales price. And this is equal to the number of tests multiplied by one point five ounces multiplied again by forty cents per ounce. Okay? We know, we know for a fact that it was eight hundred and eighty dollars favorable. What that means is, we can now solve for it more easily. As we don't need to actually know what the number of tests is. In fact, that's what we're looking for in this case. And now that we know that, let's set up the equation. We have twenty thousand dollars. And then we subtract it by the number of tests. Are we going to use a little pound symbol here? And then we multiply it by sixty cents. The reason we use sixty cents is because we use sixty cents because it was favorable. To my knowledge, that's correct. So it'll be sixty cents or dollar sign zero point six. And this will be equal to eight hundred and eighty dollars. Good. So from here, we need to move eight hundred and eighty dollars to one side and this to the other side. The way we'll do this is as follows. It'll be twenty thousand plus eight hundred and eighty. Whoa. Okay. Which is equal to the number of tests times one point five times forty. Test times one point five times forty. Well, zero point four if you want to use the dollars. Like that. Then you'll put this into your calculator and you'll get twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars is equal to tests, not the number of tests multiplied by sixty cents. Oh, my bad. It's not because it's favorable. The reason you multiply by sixty is because zero point four times one point five is zero point six. Okay? So in order to solve for the number of tests here, what you'll end up doing is twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty divided by zero point six. And that'll give you the number of tests, which in this case is thirty-four thousand, eight hundred tests. Super simple. Afterwards, we go on to the next question. The following information is available for Cody's chocolates. Yay. This one's gonna take a bit of time, but we'll be okay. Let me finish the last section here. This is a long one. The actual production of Cody's chocolates is thirty thou, is three thousand boxes. The actual budgeted production is thirty-two I mean, I, thirty-two hundred boxes. The direct materials, we have the standard, which is two pounds of chocolate per eight dollars per round. The actual is seven thousand pounds purchased at seven dollars and eighty cents per pound. And sixty-five hundred pounds used at seven point eight dollars per pound. I need to calculate direct materials price and quantity variances. Alright. This should be okay, actually. Yeah. We'll be fine. So let's just erase the left side here and get this done more easily. Um, I take the time to show myself erasing the side so that you have enough time to copy it down at this point. I couldn't do that for chapter five because those questions were too big. Alright, so to solve for a direct material price variance direct material price variance, dimp of, we know that AQ times AP is equal to seven thousand pounds LBS multiplied by seven dollars and eighty cents divided by pounds. We know that the pounds here are going to cancel out because that's the nature of math. And we are left with five thousand, fifty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. Okay? Good. And then we know that the AQ multiplied by the SQ, SP, uh, the SP will be equal to seven thousand pounds multiplied by the eight dollars divided by LB. LB will cancel out and we will be left with fifty-six thousand dollars. We know from here that there's something we need to calculate. Can you guess what it is? That's right. We need to calculate if this is favorable or unfavorable. Do you know which one we're using first? Do you? Good. I'm going to assume you said it correctly because I have faith in all of you. To, together, we can all pass this test. We know that we have this big one here. The actual, the actual quantity times the sales price will give us fifty-six thousand dollars. Subtracted by the actual quantity times the actual price is fifty-four thousand dollars, fifty-four point six thousand dollars. Therefore, we have one thousand, four hundred dollars. And since this is positive, this is favorable. Up next, we have the direct material quantity variance. Okay? So for direct material quantity variance, we are going to have AQ it times SP will be equal to sixty-five, six point five K LBS multiplied by eight dollars divided by LB. And the reason we're using eight dollars, just to let you guys know, is because the eight dollars comes from the standard which is two pounds of chocolate at eight dollars per pound. But because we don't actually know what it is and we're using direct material quantity variance, we're just given the number of sixty we're just given the number of, the numbers as followed. Therefore, from here, we need to calculate it. Okay? Because we know that's seven thousand pounds. This is this for the direct material. And then the other one is sixty-five thousand pounds used at seven dollars and eighty cents. But we're calculating with eight dollars because that's the standard price. Okay? Here's the number we've been using, but we're calculating with eight because it's standard. That's the only reason. Okay? Good. And this will be equal to, that looks terrible. This will be equal to fifty-two thousand dollars. And now we need to get the SQ. The SQ times SP. So sales price times sales quantity. Good? Excellent. We know that the actual one is the one we subtract by and that the sales one is the one that we don't subtract, is the one that we start with. Because that's the original one and then we're going about what we actually paid, but you know what it actually is. So in this case, S, sales quantity times sales price is equal to three thousand boxes times two pounds because in the question it says two pounds per box. And then we multiply by eight dollars per bo, per pound. We get rid of this section here and we are left with forty-eight thousand dollars. And since this is the sales quantity, sales price and not the actual one, this is what we start with. So it'll be forty-eight thousand subtracted by fifty-two thousand. And this will give us negative four thousand dollars. Which is just four thousand unfavorable. When it's on a test, you don't write the negative. It's just four thousand unfavorable. Just letting you know so that you don't get deducted points. Although, most likely the exam's gonna be multiple choice, so I don't see if we do have a free response, how he'll do it for us. Be kind of scummy. Okay, moving on. Portrait Paint manufactures artist oils. Let's pull up his questions. Control copy, control paste. Portrait. That was bad. We'll fix it. Portrait paints manufactures artist oil paints. Each forty milliliter tube of paint requires five minutes of direct labor and the standard labor rate is nine dollars per direct labor hour. In September, Portrait incurred ten thousand, eight hundred dollars of direct labor hours at a cost of ninety-five thousand dollars to produce a hundred and twenty thousand tubes of paint. Need to calculate Portrait's direct labor rate variance for September. So we need to get the direct labor rate. How do we do that? Let us continue. So what we know in the question is that AQ multiplied by AP is equal to it is direct labor hours, so it's ten thousand, eight hundred direct labor hours multiplied by the AP. But since we don't actually know what the AP is, it's assumed that we're looking for the direct labor variance. However, thankfully, thankfully, this number is given to us because we know that this is equal to ninety thousand, ninety-five thousand dollars. That looks like a terrible, there you go. Dollar sign. Good. And then we also know that the AQ is the actual quantity multiplied by the sales price is equal to ten thousand eight hundred direct labor hours multiplied by nine dollars divided by direct labor hour. So we'll cancel out the direct labor hours and be left with ninety seven thousand two hundred. And since this is the actual sales price as opposed to, this, since this is the sales price instead of the actual price, we know that the sales price is what we are going to be subtracting from compared to the actual price. Okay? Good. Let's just erase this really quickly so that I can keep going. Dots everywhere. It'll look like a chalkboard in this. Because of this, we know that it's going to be ninety seven two hundred subtracted by ninety five thousand dollars. Because they're both in dollars, and this gives us two, and two thousand two hundred dollars. And since it is positive, it is favorable. This is the direct labor variance for question number seven. Three more questions to go. Workers at Banner News were paid a total of thirty three thousand dollars, four hundred. Why don't I do that? Thirty three thousand four hundred dollars during the month of July. The company's standard wage rate was eight dollars per hour. Direct labor rate variance for the month was one thousand four hundred dollars unfavorable. How many direct labor hours were worked during July? In a sense, we need to look for direct labor hours. Good. But we know, would we know, that the AQ times the actual quantity times the actual price is equal to, it's already given to us, it's thirty three thousand four hundred dollars. Okay? And now we are looking for the, I didn't know I could move it. That's cool. Wow. Good to know. Sorry about that. We know that the actual quantity multiplied by the sales price is equal to the actual quantity times eight dollars divided by directly per hour. Okay. This is a D. Let's fix that. There we go. And we also know that it is one thousand four hundred dollars unfavorable. Therefore, this is a negative. Although, that's kinda strange to point out. However, the reason we read it, we read it as a positive is because we don't use negative numbers in this. Therefore, the arithmetic is a bit strange. But you'll see why it's done this way in just a quick second. Okay? Good. So we, now that we know all the information, we need to set up the equation. We're looking for direct labor variance. Well, actually, we're looking for the direct labor hours. So we know that it is thirty three four zero zero dollars subtracted by open parentheses, the actual quantity multiplied by eight dollars. We're not using the the variables because we already know what they are, and we already know that they cancel out. And this equals to one thousand four hundred dollars. From here, we need to realize that the way we solve this is to start subtracting. Therefore, we subtract fourteen hundred from both sides, and we move this side to the other side to make it positive. Do, doing that will give us this. Thirty two thousand dollars is equal to the AQ times eight dollars. Now to get the AQ, which is the direct labor hours, the actual quantity of labor hours anyways, we have to do thirty two thousand and divide that by eight dollars. The dollar signs will cancel out, and that gives us four thousand DLH. The DLH is already included in the AQ, so I'm not gonna bother explaining that. These are your direct labor hours for question eight. Question nine, so the penultimate question. But before that, let's, actually, I'll put it up here. Just so you guys have time to read it. Hollyman Industries is a leading manufacturer of golf balls. Each golf ball requires one minute of direct labor time to complete. Hollyman used seven thousand two hundred doc- direct labor hours in July to produce four hundred and twenty thousand golf balls. Hollyman's standard labor rate is nine dollars per direct labor hour, and the actual labor rate is July was eight dollars and seventy five cents. We need to calculate his direct labor efficiency variance for July. Okay? Now that we know that, let's get cracking. Uh, okay. I don't know why it wasn't letting me erase for a little bit, but sure. Let me erase now, I guess. That should work, right? Not too hard, right? We can totally do it. I have faith in all of you. Do you have faith in me? I hope you do. Well, we know that the actual quantity times the sales price is given to us as seventy two. Actual quantity times the sales price is given to us as it is seven point two what the hell? Thousand direct labor hours multiplied by nine dollars. Whoa. Divided by directly per hours. You got the justies cancel out, and we are left with sixty four thousand eight hundred dollars. What the hell? Why does that happen to me? Okay, now that we know that this is the amount, quantity, the actual quantity times the sales price, let's look for the sales quantity times the sales price. What they actually sold was, okay, so it's gonna be SQ multiplied by SP. What they actually sold us was four hundred and twenty thousand golf balls. So GB multiplied by one over sixty. And the reason it's one over sixty is because it takes one minute to complete to complete each golf ball. A minute is sixty seconds. That's where the sixty comes from. DLH divided by ball. Okay? Oops. It's actually, it looks like this. It's, it's actually a bit funny. It's this divided by ball, and then here is DLH. I know it looks, it looks kinda sketchy, but this is the correct way to write it down. And then we close this in a parentheses. And we multiply it by nine. Let's just try to fit the nine here. Perfect. We multiply this by nine, divided by DLH. Now that you have that, you plug that into your calculator, and you'll get sixty three thousand dollars. Since the actual sales quantity times sales price, and the actual, since the sales quantity times sales price that we would have had is lower, we're gonna get an unfavorable one. To show it off, let me explain. It's sixty three thousand minus sixty four point eight thousand. And this is equal to negative one eight zero zero, which is unfavorable. And when you put unfavorable, it's assumed that this becomes positive. Not sure why, but that's just how the professor wants you to write it down. Last question, and then I'm gonna take a quick break. I'll be back for chapter seven. No, don't worry. Okay? Good. Let me pull it up so that we don't lose track of it. It's a buddy paper company. Cool. Buddy Paper Company produces specialty papers. During August, the company produced fifty thousand reams of paper. The standard wage rate is seven dollars and fifty cents per hour, and each room of paper requires twelve minutes of direct labor. The direct labor efficiency variance for August was one thousand five hundred dollars variable. How many directly were hours were actually worked during August? Let's see. So in the case, we're looking for the direct labor hours. Well, we already know that it, what do we know? What do we know? We know that it's one thousand five hundred favorable, so it's a positive number. This is the direct labor efficiency variance, so direct labor efficiency variance. And that we have, we're looking for AQ. And then SP times SQ is already given to us in the problem. Although, it doesn't seem like it. I'll explain to you how we get it. SQ times SP is equal to, open parentheses, fifty thousand reams of paper or units multiplied by zero point two. There's no dollar sign here. Why did I do that? I'm sorry. Zero point two DLH divided by room. Okay, let's, let's do some better spacing. Two DLH divided by unit. And then from here, we multiply it by seven dollars and fifty cents divided by directly per hour. This will enable us to cancel out directly per hour and cancel out units. Therefore, we know that this equals seventy five thousand dollars. Once again, we do not actually know what AQ is, but that's what we're here to solve. And by that, I mean this section, because I showed off this section first for a reason. The second section is a lot easier to explain and takes a lot less room. Okay? We got this. Okay, we totally have this. AQ times the sales price in this instance is equal to AQ multiplied by these seven dollars and fifty cents divided by DLH. And we're looking for something with DLH, because actual quantity, amount quantity is gonna be the DLH section. So we know that this is seventy five thousand dollars. But since it is favorable, we're gonna be using negative numbers. Because I don't know why. The textbook does it a bit strangely. There's an easier way to do it, but I don't wanna confuse anyone because we've been using the textbook method. Amount quantity times the seven point five dollars. And we subtract it by seventy five thousand dollars. Okay? And this will be equal to negative one thousand five hundred. From here, we just need to solve for AQ, which, you know, honestly, isn't too hard. If you've been following along, then the rest of this should be a lot easier. I, I know at first it was a bit confusing because it's all set up strangely, but in reality, it's simple arithmetic. We'll have the actual quantity here. Which will be the AQ times seven dollars and fifty cents. Why does it do that to me? Is equal to seventy three thousand five hundred dollars. Okay? From here, we're going to take the actual quantity is equal to seventy three point five thousand dollars divided by seven point five dollars, thus cancelling out this and leaving only DLH. And this on your calculator should give you nine thousand eight hundred direct labor hours. That is every question for chapter six. That was a lot longer than I thought. I will be back for chapter seven, so I'm just gonna take my lunch break away.